Good evening. Oh, y'all can do better than that. Good evening. All right, it is now 6:00 PM on Tuesday, February 4th, 2025. I'd like to call our regular session council meeting to order. Madam Clerk, can you take the role, please?
Branham?
Here.
Pugh?
Here.
Little?
Here.
Livingston?
Here.
Terracio?
Here.
Weaver?
Here.
Baron?
Here.
Aline?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
English?
Present.
Newton?
Here.
We have a quarrel.
Thank you. A next item on the agenda is the invocation. And this evening, we will have the Honorable Cheryl English leading us. Councilwoman English, you're recognized.
Thank you, Madam Chief. And we all just bow. Father, in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, that we come to you now, Lord, thanking you for this day, thanking you for this very hour, thanking you for life, for health, for strength, for family, for friends, for loved ones, for being our guide, our God, and for directing us and leading us. God, we thank you. We stand in awe of your deity, of your power, of your glory and your splendor. We thank you for all that you do. Let us remember those, Lord, that we represent. Let those that we represent, Lord, remember that we're all in this together. Thank you, Lord, that as we continue to move Richland County forward, we do it with your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding, and your guidance. We thank you, Lord, that we are one fit body, joined together, moving in the direction that will bring you glory, honor, and praise. Father, we ask you now to bless the staff of this county. Thank you for all that they do. Thank you for all that they bring, for being the head, Lord, for being the front line. And we just thank you, God. We ask you to bless this council, God. Continue to give us what we stand in need of, that we may stand strong, decreeing and declaring what thus saith the Lord. And Father, we thank you for the citizens of Richland County. Make us stronger, Lord, make us better. Thank you, Lord, for leading us, for guiding us. These are our blessings we ask and thanks we give in the precious name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Councilwoman English, for leading us this evening in prayer. This is our first meeting of 2025 in council chambers, and this body, we need all the prayer we can get. So thank you. Appreciate it. Amen. All right. Next item on our agenda is the presentation of resolutions. If you have it given to me, I'd be more than happy to read it. Thank you. This evening, we have a resolution recognizing William H. Peters upon his retirement for years of exceptional service to Richland County. Whereas William "Bill" H. Peters, after 21 years of dedicated service to Richland County, is retiring from his role as Director of Operational Services. Bill began his distinguished career with the county as Fleet Manager, where his unwavering commitment to excellence played a key role in maintaining a reliable and efficient fleet of vehicles for county operations. And through his exceptional leadership, Bill's fleet management practices earned recognition multiple times as one of the National Fleet Management Association's 100 Best Fleets among all public fleets in America. In his role as Director of Operational Services, Bill restructured and revitalized the county's facilities maintenance program, building a high-performing team that ensured the effective and efficient management of all county facilities, and was instrumental in bolstering the county's capital projects program, leading it to unprecedented progress with the successful completion of critical infrastructure projects that benefited both county operations and residents of Richland County. Bill's leadership was characterized by his steadfast integrity, strong work ethic, and tireless commitment to the organization's mission. His dedication to public service has been an inspiration to his colleagues and the community. Throughout his career, Bill demonstrated a remarkable ability to build and nurture relationships with both internal and external stakeholders, fostering collaboration and progress that directly contributed to the success of numerous county initiatives. Bill's mentorship and guidance have left a lasting impact on many employees who have benefited from his wisdom, experience, and willingness to share his knowledge, shaping the next generation of leaders within our county. Bill's contributions have not only enhanced the operational efficiencies of the county, but have also made a lasting positive impact on the quality of services provided to the citizens in Richland County. Now therefore be it proclaimed that Richland County Council members Jason Branham, Derek Pugh, Tyra Little, Paul Livingston, Allison Terracio, Tish Aline, Gretchen Baron, Jessica Mackey, Cheryl English, and Shaquise Newton do hereby proclaim their sincere appreciation and heartfelt gratitude to Bill Peters for his outstanding service, unwavering dedication, and lasting legacy to Richland County. Mr. Peters, would you please stand? And if we could all join in a round of applause to recognize you. We celebrated Bill last week with a retirement party because he tried to sneak out of here and not tell us he was retired and leaving. And so thank you for coming again tonight to celebrate one more time, to make sure that we can take the time to publicly acknowledge you for all that you've done for Richland County. You truly are appreciated, and we, without employees like you, we know that this county would not be able to deliver for our residents. So thank you so much for your service.
Madam Chair?
Yes, please.
If I could, I'd like to move that we approve this resolution.
Second.
For motion and second to approve resolution, Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. If my colleagues would join me over at the seal for a picture with Mr. Peters.
Thank you all very kindly. I greatly appreciate this. As to sneaking out, I wasn't really sneaking out. I was, it's time to go. I just want to say that this actually was a more difficult decision than I thought. This is a wonderful place to work right now. The county is doing wonderful things under the leadership of the council and the administration we have. And although I won't be involved from the front lines anymore, I'll be keeping close track from the sidelines. I'm really curious to see how everything plays out that you folks have planned and are talking about. And God bless you all. Thank you.
All right. You are recognized, Mr. Pugh.
Thank you, ma'am. I appreciate it. I just got two things that I want to make a statement on before we get into the meat of the meeting. First of all, I wanted to take the opportunity to tell my colleague, wish our colleague Don Weaver a happy birthday. He's trying to sneak in for his birthday today. And not be a part of it. Don does a great job of recognizing everybody else's birthdays, and he buys great gifts. So I think it was only right that we recognize him. And my second point of privilege is, as I scour the room, I see these medals, and I just want to publicly, I just want to publicly acknowledge Team Mackey's win at our strategic forum retreat. It was very competitive, and they did a wonderful job. Congratulations, ma'am.
So you know, we kicked off 2025, and I've learned my lesson about letting the vice chair speak too early. But thank you, Vice Chair Pugh.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes. All right. Next item on the agenda is item five, approval of minutes. We have 5A, Special Call Meeting, December 10th, 2024.
Madam Chair?
You're recognized.
Move to approve items 5A through C.
A motion and second to approve, excuse me, to approve items 5A through C. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little? Livingston? Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item six, adoption of the agenda. Administrator Brown, do we have any additions or deletions?
No requested changes for administration.
Madam Chair?
Recognized.
I do have one deletion or deferral of 7E, Project Connect, property update, to defer that to February 11th. And if we can replace E with Pearson v. Richland County update pursuant to 30-4-70A2 of the South Dakota Code.
Thank you. So we have, just to change the executive session item 7E. Hearing no other changes, I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Okay.
For motion and a second to adopt the agenda with the change mentioned from the attorney. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is item seven, Report of the Attorney for Executive Session Items. Attorney Wright, you're recognized.
Yes, Madam Chair. There are five items for executive session. A courthouse, 7A, courthouse security, 7B, property inquiry, northeast, south, like lane, C, update on public-private partnership, D, detention center update, and E, Pearson v. Richland County.
Do any of these require outside counsel?
The public-private partnership will have outside counsel.
Thank you. Per county council rules, executive session items that do require outside counsel are taken up during our first executive session, and then all remaining items will be taken up at the second executive session item in our agenda. So I'll entertain a motion.
So move, Madam Chair.
Second.
All right, so I believe the motion and second is to go into executive session to discuss item 7C, an update on public-private partnership. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Terracio? Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
We're now in executive session.
Intertend a motion to come out of executive session?
So moved.
Second.
A motion is second to come out of executive session, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Please let the record reflect that we went into executive session to discuss item seven C, an update on public-private partnership, and no action was taken.
Madam Chair.
You recognize Councilman Brenham?
Could Mr. Livingston have a motion?
Green.
Second.
A motion and a second? Discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pugh?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is item eight, citizens' input for items on the agenda not requiring a public hearing. Vice Chair Pugh, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, we have one person signed up to speak. When I call your name, please come to the podium, state your name, and you have... You have two minutes to speak.
Two minutes.
That person is Antoine Harris. Mr. Harris, if you approach the podium, please give your name and your address, and you have two minutes to speak, sir.
Um, all right, my name is Antoine Harris. Uh, address is, uh, I'm here with the federal government, so I'm everywhere. How about that? I don't know my address at the hotel I'm at.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Okay. Um, but, uh, no, what I was gonna just briefly say is, um...
Hold on, one second, Mr. Harris.
Could you give your, your office address or something, so we...
Business card, sir.
Yes, required, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah. Yes, sir, here you go, sir. Harris, don't say we didn't help you out, all right?
All right, so this is the, uh, office out of Atlanta. This is 101 Marietta Street Northwest, Suite 700, Atlanta GA 30303.
Thank you, Mr. Harris.
First time I've ever been asked that. Uh, but no, my name's Antoine Harris. I'm the, uh, Public Affairs Specialist, uh, for the, uh, U.S. Small Business Administration, um, here in the Midlands, and I represent the Office of Disaster Recovery and Resilience. And so we've been here, uh, in South Carolina ever since the, uh, Hurricane Helene disaster, and we have been working side by side with all of our federal partners as far as, um, uh, offering, you know, disaster recovery aid. And I just wanted to let the public know, um, that we still have funds available, we still have options available. And, um, on February the 12th, which is next Wednesday, uh, I'll be at the Richland County Library. I'll have a, in Room A, I'll be set up where if anyone had any questions, any, you know, any information that they wanted, they can come out to learn about our disaster assistance. So we, we're still here, we still have, uh, funds available. And, um, if you have any questions, all of you have the information I emailed you earlier today. And, uh, you have my business cards, and so my information's there. I just ask that you share that information with your constituents, uh, anyone that you may know that's still in need of assistance, um, business owners, nonprofits, uh, homeowners, renters as well, and, um, have them reach out to me, I can get them to the right people. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. Madam Chair, that concludes everyone that's signed up to speak for that item.
Thank you. Next is item nine, citizens' input must pertain to Richland County matters not on the agenda. Items for which a public hearing is required, or a public hearing has been scheduled, cannot be addressed at this time. Vice Chair Pugh, you recognize?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, we have four people signed up to speak. When I call your name, if you come to your nearest podium, state your name and your address, and you have two minutes to speak. The first person up is Mr. Andy Marquette. I hope I pronounced your name right, sir.
Good evening, Council. My name is Andy Marquardt. I am the, uh, CEO of Adventure. The street address is 211 Gervais Street, Columbia, South Carolina. Um, I'm just here tonight to express our gratitude and give a couple of updates on some projects that we have going on at the museum. The, the first is, we, and, and there's a couple of documents that we're able to hopefully distribute to you all. The first is, we have a board-approved five-year plan that was, uh, approved at our fall board meeting that commences this January, so last month. Mark Drew is one of our biggest champions, and our Director of Education and Experiences is here tonight, and he knows that I am, uh, not a big fan of strategic plans that are binders, that end up with dust on a bookshelf, and then you dust off at the end of five years and go, "What did we accomplish?" This plan very much will be directing our decision-making and guiding how we per- produce our budget and everything else within Adventure and our board and our staff for the, for the coming five years with some very solid, uh, and I think attainable goals, uh, for, for the museum. Um, the second update is an update on our dinosaur exhibit, um, which is now called Fossils to Futures. We are about at the halfway point of this exhibit from, uh, establishing the funding mechanism and then, uh, opening, hopefully in the spring of 2026. We have just completed our schematic design phase, which there are excerpts for you in the, uh, in, in the information that we provided. But this, uh, this exhibit was, uh, it now has a budget of three and a half million dollars. So thanks to the support from the county, we've been able to leverage double the amount of funding. Plus, uh, we have a goal to get to four million dollars by the project, by the time the project is finished. So we have a, we have a great, uh, design team, uh, called Roto Studios. They have been bringing this, uh, exhibit to reality for us. Um, and again, we're hoping it will open, um, hopefully in the March of 2026. Also part of that is the, uh, front-entry renovation, which we've already started parts of that, uh, but that will be completed in the fall of this year as well. So, um, really exciting stuff happening in the museum. We cannot thank you all enough for your support and everything that you do, not only for Richland County but for the museum, and we cannot wait to see you at the museum soon.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Rodrick Shiver. Mr. Shiver, if you can come to the podium, state your name and your address. You have two minutes to speak, sir.
Good evening. My name is Rodrick Shiver. Uh, my address is 1722 Main Street, Columbia, South Carolina, 29201. It is with a, a great honor that I stand before you today as the President of the Board of Trustees for Historic Columbia. At this time, I would like to, uh, acknowledge our board members that are here today.
Could you please stand?
Thank you. As well as senior staff members that are here as well. Thank you. Since, uh, 1961, uh, the founding of Historic Columbia, it has remained true to its purpose, and that is preserving places and sharing complex stories from the past that connect us in the present and inspire our future. The future of Historic Columbia is so bright. From an organization that grew from an annual budget of only $300,000 to now a whopping $2.5 million, and managing seven properties under, uh, the organization's care, two owned by Richland County, the Hampton Preston Mansion, as well as the Museum of Reconstruction at the Woodrow Wilson House. The future of Historic Columbia is so bright. After 22 years of exceptional leadership under the care of Robin Waits, Robin decided to retire. Although we were disappointed, but we knew that the future was bright. And now, as a board, we've co- we've coined the term EC 2.0, and I stand before you here today to introduce our new Executive Director of Historic Columbia, Suzanne Brooks. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Shiver. Next, we have Ms. Suzanne Brooks. Ms. Brooks, if you approach the podium, state your name and your address, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Yes, sir, thank you. Suzanne Brooks, 1601 Richland Street, Columbia, South Carolina, 29201. Um, I'd like to echo, uh, Rodrick's remarks and thank our Board of Trustees members, as well as our, um, Director of Preservation, John Shear, and joining us tonight. Um, it's my honor to join you in the capacity of Executive Director of Historic Columbia. Uh, following the tenure of my predecessor, which I know many of you came, became to trust and recognize Historic Columbia under her leadership, I recognize the gravity of the role Historic Columbia plays in the stewardship of Richland County's history and future. Through our care and interpretation of the Hampton Preston Mansion and the Woodrow Wilson Family Home interpreted as the nation's first-of-the-time Museum of Reconstruct, of the Reconstruction era, I look forward to engaging the county residents and visitors in providing access to these cultural and natural assets, and enhancing the quality of life and sense of place that is uniquely experienced in these significant sites. Equal to our commitment to the continued site management, Historic Columbia is setting its sights on the future of our organization as we embark on a new three-year strategic plan. The goals and objectives we will set forth in the program of our future programming and outreach will build Historic Columbia's reputation to educate and preserve, and we look forward to your engagement. Thank you for your continued support, both individually and as a council, and I trust Historic Columbia will continue to build strong relationships with you all. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Ms. Brooks. Next, we have Helen Bradley. Ms. Bradley, if you can come to the podium, state your name and your address, and you have two minutes to speak, ma'am.
Good evening. My name is Helen Taylor Bradley. I reside at 1916 Martin Luther King Boulevard, Hopkins, South Carolina. Tonight, I come before you. We, the St. John Holistic Wellness Exercise Group, and those are some of our individuals sitting behind us that participate in these programs. We focus on all degrees of wellness, the mind, the body, and soul. More than 10 years ago, a few of us came together to focus on the needs of our aging community in the Lower Richland area, comprised of Hopkins, Eastover, and Gaston. Throughout the past 10 years or more, we have grown into a group of 60-plus residents of all ages, but mostly seniors, who want to stay active. Our activities range from Friday Noonday exercise classes to two Wednesday line dance classes. One of our groups meet from 11 to 1:00, the other meets from 6 to 8:00 in the afternoon. We als- we're also forming a chair volleyball team. These forms of exercise help to rejuvenate the mind and body. Our group range in ages from the early 30s to 80-plus. Not only do we have physical wellness, but we also offer bingo to stimulate the mind. We have informational classes on healthy eating and weight monitoring, blood pressure monitoring, diabetes, heart-related educational information as well. We also offer food assistance, spiritual counseling, and motivational classes. As you can see, we offer a wide range of activities to, for our seniors and everyone who come. We would like to have T-shirts and other incentives to offer our seniors to have them to come on a regular basis. Now, we started out with about 60, now we're well over 150 that come to the different programs we have. So we will be sending...
That's your time, ma'am.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, that concludes everyone signed up to speak for that item.
Thank you. Next is item 10, report of the County Administrator. Administrator Brown, you recognize?
Good evening, members of Council. Uh, on item, uh, 10A, under the Administrator's Report, on, on the general update, I'll provide you a little bit more detail on next week. You may have heard, uh, some information about, uh, federal grants, uh, and some potential issues that may have come about, and maybe wondering how that may affect Richland County. Hopefully next week in our next Administrator's Report, we'll provide you just a brief, uh, synopsis of what's happened over the past a couple of weeks related to, uh, that particular funding, uh, in case you are concerned about what the, Richland County, uh, may have an impact, uh, in relationship to those, those decisions. But we'll provide you more details about that on next week. Uh, but under item 10A2, Strategic Plan Forum Recap, on page 18 of your packet, I provided you just a brief, uh, update on some information related to the forum. For the benefit of our public who did not have necessarily their chance to attend, Richland County Council, along with Richland County Administration, and some of our, uh, department leadership and senior staff, uh, attended a strategic planning forum. Uh, this is an annual event where a county council gets together, uh, to understand what it may focus on in the upcoming year. Uh, we do have a strategic plan that is currently in place. Uh, and one of the things that we did was we went to, uh, Rock Hill, uh, and we went to Rock Hill to look at recreational tourism, as well as other activities associated with potential parks that could help our citizens who may be looking for recreation in Richland County. Uh, strategically, for the past few years, we have chosen a site to go and take a look at where they have been doing something that Richland County sees as a potential benefit for our residents, both economically and socially. And so that's why we chose to visit Rock Hill. While we in, we're rock, while we were in Rock Hill, we did visit their BMX Supercross track, their velodrome, and their soccer fields known as Manchester Meadows. Uh, and for those of you who are, uh, familiar with that area, it draws in a lot of out-of-state, um, tourism to their community, and they use it as a economic, uh, engine, but it's also, uh, available to the residents in that area. So, uh, taking a look at that was one of the things that we did. In addition to that, at the forum, uh, we spent time reviewing the county strategic plan, really from a capital improvement, uh, strategy. And one of the things that we'll do on next week is we'll talk a little bit more about some of the request that kind of came out of Strategic Planning Forum, just so you know what we're captured and what we plan to do in order to make sure, uh, that we move forward with some of the discussions that were had at the Strategic Planning Forum. So that's just a general recap, um, of what happened. But the main focus is, uh, at the forum, we talked about both the present sta- stages of Richland County. One of the things we talked about was how strong the county is functionally and financially. And then we talked about the future. What does that look like? And that led to some of the responses that council members had about some of the information that you received. And again, we'll highlight some more of that on next week to make sure we have captured appropriately some of the discussion that you had and the things you wanted to see going into this next fiscal year. Uh, one of the things we also pointed out was that our strategic plan process, uh, we looked at a three-year cycle. And so we're coming up on the end of that three-year cycle. So in our process, we'll be looking at what does that look like going forward? So we'll be going through a new strategic planning process, uh, in the coming year. So that would, uh, conclude the recap, uh, related to Strategic Planning Forum. So before I move on to the next item on the report, um, certainly we entertain any questions that you may have about the information that was covered. Okay, the next item, um, what I wanted to do was highlight, um, for the purpose of our comprehensive plan update, is a document that reflects, and that's on pages 19, uh, of your packet and 20, the steps that the council, um, through its staff, has taken to encourage and engage the citizens about the comprehensive plan. And so, um, you will continue to receive periodic updates, but this particular document is designed to communicate to the general public the things that we have done so far to get input, to encourage engagement. Uh, that's happened through a number of meetings that the staff has had, that's had through community meetings that council has had. But the main focus is, we want to capture and communicate the importance of receiving input from our community related to the comprehensive plan. So, uh, that document currently reflects the different activities that have kind of gone on, uh, so that the public can see, we really want to hear from you. And so when we're out and about in your communities, um, please make sure to engage us. And for council members, if there are areas that ultimately, uh, you feel that we're not covering, that we're hitting, that you are allowed to give us feedback so we can make sure that we capture input from your constituents, uh, in those areas. So that was the general updates I wanted to provide you on this evening. Uh, I have no action items, and that does conclude my report.
Thank you, Administrator Brown. Next is item 11, report of the Clerk of Council. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to communicate to the public that District 7 is gonna be holding a town hall meeting to discuss some rezonings in that area. The town hall meeting will, is scheduled for Thursday, uh, February the 7th at 6:00 PM at Doco Manor. So they're welcome to attend, and public input will be received at that time. That concludes my report.
Thank you so much. Uh, I just want to make sure, Thursday, February 6th?
I'm sorry, it's February 6th.
Thursday, February 6th at Doco Manor, 6:00 PM? 6:00 PM? Thank you so much, Madam Clerk, for that update. Uh, next is item 12, report of the Chair. And, uh, wanted to take a moment to, uh, properly welcome and introduce two new council members that we have, uh, serving with us. We have, uh, Ms. Tyra Little, representing District 3. Welcome aboard. This is your, your first meeting? Welcome aboard. This is your first meeting this evening. We are grateful to have you join us. Ms. Little is a retired veteran that has served our country for many years and has- from Columbia, a Columbia native, and has gone around serving our country, but has come back here home to represent our residents in District Three. And then we have Ms. Tish Aileen, representing District Eight. Ms. Aileen is a local attorney here in town, and she grew up from Georgetown, South Carolina, but has lived here a very, very long time and is very familiar with District Eight. So welcome, both of you all. We look forward to working alongside each of you. And I will give a few moments if you have anything you'd like to say. No pressure. You recognized?
I just want to say thank you, and I look forward to working with all of my colleagues to serve the people of Richland County. Thank you.
Yeah. Recognize us, little-
Chair, thank you for that warm welcome. I definitely look forward to serving the constituents of District Three, and I look forward to working alongside with-
Thank you. All right, and we briefly did touch on this earlier, but just want to make sure I properly recognize some county employees. Mr. Brown talked about our Strategic Planning Forum that we had. During that time, we also had the ability to spend time with county staff and colleagues. And we have an annual trivia competition that we compete in, and I want to make sure that I publicly recognize each of the county employees that participated and, again, walked away in first place with trivia. And so thank you to our county employees who not only do a great job, but are up to date on all trivia things. So if you would, raise your hand, and I see many of you have your first-place medal. So thank you again for the continued collaboration and participation. I look forward to continuing to work with and lead this team for many years to come on trivia. Thank you. That concludes the report of the chair. Uh, next-
Can we just-
I don't know if I want to recognize you.
Can we just remind you-
This is the report of the chair, Mr. Weaver.
Can we just remind everyone whose team it was that won again that set on that trip? Is that necessary?
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Weaver. Happy birthday. Next is item thirteen, approve-
Madam Chair.
Who was that?
Madam Chair.
Ms. Tracyo, you're recognized.
Move to approve items thirteen A through D.
Thank you. The motion is second for approval of items thirteen A through D. Any discussion? Hearing non, Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Tracyo?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aileen?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Do any of these require reconsideration?
Item thirteen D.
Thank you.
Move to reconsider thirteen D.
The motion is second for reconsideration of thirteen D. Any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Oh.
Pew?
Oh.
Little?
Oh.
Livingston? Tracyo?
Oh.
Weaver?
Oh.
Baron?
Oh.
Aileen?
Oh.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
Oh.
Newton?
Oh.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Next is item fourteen, first reading item. Fourteen A, An Ordinance Amending the Tourism Development and Accommodation Tax Funds in the Fiscal Year Twenty Twenty Five Budget Ordinance Number Zero One Eight Dash Two Four H.R. of Richland County, South Carolina. The motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any discussion?
Madam Chair.
You're recognized, Ms. Tracyo.
Of maybe staff or someone speak to-
Yes, ma'am. Just a brief reminder. I will give a brief update, and if I leave anything out, staff feel free. This ordinance, first reading amendment, is in relation to the vote that council took to utilize up to fifteen percent of our accommodations tax for down payment assistance for Richland County employees, Richland County schoolteachers, and Richland County public safety workers. And this is to reflect that in our budget.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk?
Brenham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Tracyo?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
Aileen?
Yes.
English?
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Next is item fifteen, report of the Development and Services Committee. Councilwoman Newton, you're recognized.
Thank you. We have one item on the Development and Services Agenda. I will read what is printed on the agenda, and then I'll discuss the modifications that were made in committee. Specifically, it says, "For the purpose of preserving the historical character of the Olympia neighborhood, I moved to within, to within twelve months to create a neighborhood character overlay in tandem with an update to the neighborhood plan for the Olympia neighborhood. During this time, a moratorium on new construction, rezoning, demolition, and substantial rehabilitation, fifty percent more of lot area, building square footage, change in use, will be in place." So, we discussed this matter in the Development and Services Committee, and specifically two other items that were related. And in committee, the committee voted to modify this motion, removing any reference to a moratorium, but instead referencing a pause while we evaluated the historical overlay. My understanding is that per our rules, we weren't able to forward the language that was approved in committee to council and had to have it listed as originally written. But the intent of the Development and Services Committee and the motion that we put forward to you is to eliminate that word "moratorium" and instead use the word "pause."
Does that, I'm sorry, does that conclude-
That concludes my report. I was, I was getting strong eye contact from the attorney, so I was-
Yeah, so I, I believe that I heard intentions, is that the committee's recommendation?
That was the committee's recommendation and motion that was passed unanimously.
Thank you. Attorney Wright?
Yes, I just want to say that I think legally, changing the word "moratorium" to "pause" is not going to change that it's a moratorium. So, I would recommend that the word "moratorium" remain. And I would just, so everyone knows is that this is still a motion. In order to do it, it was still taken ordinance, which is three readings and a public hearing.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you're recognized, Ms. Newton.
A question. So, in terms of today, you said it requires a motion, three readings, and a public hearing. This is just the motion part, the three readings would be subsequent?
Right. There was, there would need to be an ordinance actually developed.
Thank you.
Any further, okay, Ms. Tracyo, are you wanting to say something, or are you thinking?
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
And so, it was my understanding that this moratorium pause could, could be worked on while, at the same time, the character, the neighborhood character overlay would be worked on. Are you saying that both would require a separate, so we would need two ordinances?
Well, this, this motion, what you're requesting for a moratorium would require an ordinance.
Thank you. Has staff been asked to? Would staff only begin to work on an ordinance once we create, once we take a vote tonight?
I believe that council has to approve something, and I think that it can go back to committee, and staff can work on an ordinance to present to the committee, for the committee to approve, to bring back to full council.
Would it necessarily need to go back through the committee?
I think that's the general process. The committee could, well, the council could vote to take it up by full council instead of doing it committee.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? You're recognized, Ms. English.
One of the things I just kind of wanted to clarify, in Councilwoman Tracyo, I spoke tonight, is the section that this would apply to, it doesn't apply to the entire Olympia area, which can encompass all of Olympia from the Mill all the way down to Taylors beyond Montgomery Lane, which is a large area, but it is that section right there where the Mill District is. And so not the entire Olympia area, and I just needed to make that clear so residents understand.
Thank you. Madam Chair?
Yes, ma'am, you're recognized.
Just to be very clear with the public, would it be possible for the clerk to just scroll down to that map that's in our packet? All right, I believe it's on page forty-five? Yes.
Thank you. I guess for additional clarification, and I want us to be, you know, really clear and transparent with the public. It was stated, I believe, Ms. Newton, that in the original language, "moratorium" was used, but then within the committee, the word "pause" was used, and so, so we're all on the same page. Moratorium is the official language that we are looking to use, because I think "pause" may not be clearly defined, whereas "moratorium" is defined. We know exactly what that is. And so I want to make sure, when we're talking about it, if there is any clarity behind that, I think that would be helpful. And I'm sorry, I'm saying, Ms. Newton, because it's your committee, but whoever can provide additional clarity would be helpful.
So, I think some of the things that we talked about were there, and, and some of it might be semantics, but some general concerns around moratoriums in general. And that specifically, what the intent is here, is to look at just taking time to develop that overlay. And so, it, it was really just looking at kind of the way that that word works and some of the things that it implies, as opposed to really what was the intent here, which was just to provide that time to get the overlay done.
Thank you. So, Ms. Livingston, and then Mr. Brenham?
Okay.
Let me just simply quickly say, from my experience, I certainly do not take moratoriums lightly. It's a serious matter, particularly in this case, when you're talking about new construction, rezoning, demolition, substantial rehabilitation. And I think it's something you could do it, it might need to be done, but I can't imagine my supporting or doing it without a moratorium ordinance to, to take care of any legal ramifications of things that we may encounter. And I thought at one point, I read somewhere where the attorney of office was looking at or developing a moratorium ordinance. I read that somewhere.
I've never read that.
Thank you, Ms. Livingston.
Oh, I did. On page forty-one.
We found it. Thank you. Attorney Wright is not aware of that, but thank you, Mr. Livingston, forty-one.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, sir.
I just, I just want to make a point about the importance, I think of having an ordinance to vote on, rather than voting on something that we're not clear on.
Yes, sir. Thank you for making that point. And we have Councilwoman Brenham?
Thank you. Two brief things. One, as I recall, serving on the committee in the conversation, we also discussed the desire to add some language that would indicate that if a zoning overlay were adopted in less than twelve months' time, then the moratorium would end. And I'll just mention, while I'm speaking here, at principle, I am in favor of Olympia having a zoning overlay. I'll be a no vote if the final motion, a request for a moratorium. Thank you.
Madam Chair?
You recognize, Attorney Wright?
Just to clear, tonight, it's just a motion, so it's not actually voting on the actual, the ordinance, because that's still going to take three readings to do that. So this is just a motion, whether you want to do it. And I think it's just came back up to full council, because there were some recommended changes in the original motion, which was approved. So it's already been approved. This came, it's coming back to full council because the committee was recommending some changes to the language of the motion. So that's what's being voted on tonight, is just regarding the language, the specific language of the motion that Ms. Tracyo initially recommended. And also, both the overlay and the moratorium can be taken care of in the same ordinance, so we don't necessarily need two separate ordinances.
Thank you. So just for clarification, this motion, recommendation, coming out of committee, is to clear up language, but then it goes back to committee for you all to work on ordinance language for a moratorium and an overlay district that will then come back to the full body, if voted on, to then have three readings in a public hearing.
Right.
Thank you. Ms. Tracyo? I'm sorry.
Thank you. I'm very, yeah. So, if we were going to be voting on the overlay at the same time as the moratorium, then the moratorium would, would not ever be needed, because the, this, the point of the moratorium would be to cease demolition of property, building of new structures, and substantia, and substantial renovations, or change of use in properties. That is the purpose, while this body and staff work on what the overlay is and to get that in place. I'll just also say that a Mill District plan was approved by this county years before I came on to the council. The Land Development Code that was passed a couple of years ago, year or so ago, includes, is the first time that Richland County residents have had an opportunity to avail themselves of a neighborhood character overlay. And so, at, and so I have been expressing, and these neighbors have been expressing interest in, in getting this done for many years now. And at, at seemingly every turn, there is a new sort of revelation about another part of the process. So, I'd love to be even more communicated with by folks, legal staff, whomever, about the further steps that need to be taken in order to help these folks have the protections that the Mill District neighbors in the city of Columbia have had for many, many years with a neighborhood character overlay that has preserved a lot of the historic nature of their relatively small but substantial footprint in, in the city of Columbia and in Richland County. So, thank you.
Ms. Livingston?
Madam Chair, what would make sense to me is just have our staff or attorney or somebody just develop a moratorium ordinance to present to council with consideration at some point.
Thank you. Ms. Newton?
I missed what Mr. Livingston said. Sorry, but, so, just to be clear, because the more we talk about this, the more confused I become. This came to council because we suggested changing the language, but the language we suggested changing is not present. And so that makes this conversation feel a little circular. So, in terms of the action that needs to be taken, um-
I'm sorry, Ms. Newton, so the language that you all talked about, it is in the packet?
Right, it's just not-
Is not, yes, on the agenda, but it is in the packet of y'all's, what you voted on?
Right. But at, so Ms. Tracyo made a motion where she has actions that, that need to be, well, that she would like to be considered. And what I feel that I'm hearing is that to fully consider that would require an ordinance, that that ordinance would be drafted in committee. And so my question to you is, is really, is it simply before us a motion to send this item to committee? For the development of an ordinance? What is the, the specific vote that we need to take to resolve this item now, or to move it to the next phase?
It was already in committee to basically develop the ordinance.
Right.
There were some recommended changes to the language. So, those recommended changes is what's before council tonight.
Okay, yeah, so, and, and that wasn't communicated to us when we were in committee that we were going to kick it here. So again, the action that needs to happen tonight is a vote, not on the language that is listed on fifteen A, but on the language that is listed- but on the language that is listed coming from committee?
Right.
All right, well, that was, um, the motion that the committee brought forward for approval. So can I call over the question?
You can, or you can, I mean, we're, we're in, in full council now, so whatever language you want, you can change it or adjust it and vote on it tonight. So you just need to make sure whatever language you want, if it's the original language, you can go back to the original language and make no changes, or you can make changes.
Madam Chair?
Um, oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Newton didn't answer your question. Are you good there?
I'm, I'm good with us continuing to move along, yes.
All right, Ms. Terracio, you recognize?
Thank you. Um, I move for council to direct staff to bring a suggested ordinance on a moratorium, uh, to this body.
One adjustment, direct the administrator.
Sorry, direct the administrator.
All right, so, um, just to recap here. We had a motion come out of committee, we just received a substitute motion from Councilwoman Terracio that was seconded by Ms. Barron. If we could, please repeat that motion again.
Thank you. Um, move for council to direct the administrator to have staff prepare an ordinance, um, referencing the moratorium language in the original motion to bring before, uh, this body.
The motion is second, you've heard, uh, the motion, is there any discussion? You recognize Ms. English?
Does it come before the body or does it go back to commi-
Her motion is requesting that the administrator develop an ordinance and bring it back to this body, that is her motion.
Thank you, sir.
You're welcome. All right, hearing no further discussion, we will take the vote on Mrs. Terracio's motion that directs the administrator to develop an ordinance based upon the language of a moratorium that is in our packet to bring back before the body.
Branham?
No.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
Mackey?
Oh.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
That concludes my whole report.
Thank you, Ms. Newton, we appreciate you. Next item on the agenda is item sixteen, Report of Administration and Finance Committee. Um, Councilmember Livingston, you recognize? Yes, sir. Avert or you got it?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. I'll be reporting on behalf of Mr. Livingston this evening for the Administration and Finance Committee. Uh, the committee met and they voted to send a recommendation to defer this item to the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six budget process. And that item is the Upper Township Magistrate Pay Plan. You've heard the committee's recommendation, it does not require a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron? Alene?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you. Next is item seventeen, Report of Economy Development Committee. Ms. Livingston, you recognize?
Item seventeen A, a resolution approving the, the assignment of Fresh Express acquisitions, L.L. Fresh Express Incorporated and owner, um, Mobilia, um, LLC. Interest and obligations of, uh, McIntyre Produce, McIntyre Trucking, McIntyre Limited Partnership. This is an item that came before the committee, um, whereby McIntyre Produce is, um, actually currently considering a, um, corporate restructuring. And as a result of that, they want to simply transfer, um, and ask them to, um, do so with, with another company, Mobilia LLC. That's something that's commonly done, it doesn't change any of the agreements and terms, um, with our relationship, um, with the new company. And the committee's recommendation was for approval.
You've heard the committee's recommendation, it does not require a second, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
Mackey? English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Madam Chair, um, that brings us to, um, item seventeen B, authorized on the grant of an, an, of an option to acquire certain real property on the recent county of South Carolina, um, reference of Mac Anthony Brewing, authorized the transfer of real property, reference, um, this particular piece of property. And the committee's, um, recommendation was for approval. This is the first reading item as well, too.
Thank you. You heard the committee's recommendation, it does not require a second, is there any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little? Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Newton? Yes.
Motion approved.
Seventeen C, authorized an expansion of the boundaries of that seven-seven corridor, reading industrial park jointly developed with fair fee accounting to include certain properties located in Richland County, ex- and the execution of deliverable public infrastructure credit agreement. That's to reference to Killian, um, Woods Development and other related matters. You may recall this is Killian Woods is, is this, I think it's two hundred and thirty-four unit, um, family, um, housing complex, which, which is going to contribute some thirty-eight million dollars in, in investment. Um, the committee's recommendation was, was for approv- was for approval. Part of their, um, um, incentive package includes, um, improving the traffic, pedestrian, walkways and so forth. And so the committee's recommendation was for approval.
You heard the committee's recommendation, it does not require a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
No.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
I tell you, that's, that completes the Report of Economy Development Committee.
Thank you, Councilman Livingston. Next is item eighteen, other items?
Madam Chair?
You recognize. Vice Chair Pew?
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we approve items eighteen A and B.
Second.
Motion is second for approval of eighteen A and B. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Owe to reconsider? And? Motion is second for reconsideration on eighteen A and B. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
No.
Pew?
No.
Little?
No.
Livingston?
No.
Terracio?
No.
Weaver?
No.
Barron?
No.
Alene?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton? Motion fails.
Thank you. Next is item nineteen, Executive Session. Uh, we have four items from our executive session earlier today. Um, early today, earlier this evening. Item seven A, Courthouse Security, seven B, a property inquiry. Seven D, Detention Center Update, and seven E, Pearson versus Richland County Update. Uh, Attorney Wright, you recognize?
Uh, yes, those are the items. We've already had the one item with outside counsel, so these are with no outside counsel.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session to discuss, uh, those following items.
I move, Madam Chair.
A motion is second. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Terracio?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Barron?
Yes.
Alene?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
On executive session.
All right, so I'm assuming the motion in the second was to come out of executive session. All right. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
I'll let the... give me just one minute, please. Let the record reflect that we went into executive session to discuss items 7A, B, D, and no action was taken. Councilman Branham, you're recognized.
Thank you. As to item 7B, I move that we authorize the administrator to proceed with negotiating a potential sale of that property.
Second.
A motion and a second, any discussion? Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston? Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey? English?
Yes.
Newton?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you.
Madam Chair.
You recognize Ms. Newton?
Um, does that need to be reconsidered?
That would be helpful.
Move to reconsider.
Second.
Motion and second for reconsideration for items 7B. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
No.
Pew?
No.
Little?
No.
Teresa?
No.
Livingston? Weaver?
No.
Baron?
No.
Aline?
No.
Mackey?
No.
English?
No.
Newton?
No.
Motion fails.
Thank you. Next is item 20, motion period. We have one motion that we received from the Honorable Tower, Little. "I move to direct the county administrator to research and present the options for recent county to enact a hate crime ordinance." This motion will be sent to Development and Services Committee for further exploration.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Here.
Yes, ma'am.
May I add my name to the motion?
Sure, as the maker of the motion, acceptable.
Yes.
All right.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Item 21.
Move to adjourn. Second.
Motion saying for adjournment. Madam Clerk?
Branham?
Yes.
Pew?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Livingston?
Yes.
Teresa?
Yes.
Weaver?
Yes.
Baron?
Yes.
Aline?
Yes.
Mackey?
Yes.
English?
Yes.
Newton? Motion approved.
Meeting adjourned. Thank you.